Called over the Tuesday, January ninth, regular city council line.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Need a motion in a second for the agenda?
I'll motion. I'll second.
Any changes? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously consent. May I motion a second?
I'll make a motion. I'll second.
Okay, discussion?
I have one correction I'd like to make to the minutes from our December twenty-second meeting. Says a motion was made by me to follow the state federal guidelines to cover benefits necessarily related to the military thing. And my motion was not exactly that. It was that we follow the League of Minnesota Cities Guidelines, which I know we're doing. I see it in the policy later, but I didn't. I wouldn't make that motion because that's just basically saying we'd like to follow the law.
Got it.
Probably not needed. Thank you.
Anything else?
That's, that's all I got.
Anybody else? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously. Onto open forum. So anybody on the line? Nope. All right. Zip, zip. Staff, consultant, council updates, Zach?
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Happy twenty twenty-four. Want to let you guys know that I will be out of the office after tomorrow morning. If you need anything, give me a call or text. Should be able to get back to you. We'll do my best to check back and keep, keep in touch if you need anything. And we are, reminder, we are closed next Monday for the Martin Luther King holiday. We have some old maps and posters that we have after cleaning out the back room for some elections and additional storage space. If you have any interest in any of these, you want to look at or have or whatever, come back in my office after the meeting and you can pick through the maps and stuff. If you don't want anything, it will be thrown in the trash can. And then, just as an FYI, I know that I've mentioned in a email, but we are planning on having a work session on the February thirteenth council meeting. So plan on being here at five P M. to start that meeting, just so that you guys are aware ahead of time. February thirteenth, it'll be something related to one and ten discussion slash what does rural feel look like slash starting looking at comp plan slash goal stuff, so.
What time is that? Five?
The five o'clock start, yep. So keep an eye out, Duke said more or less, just a notification to plenty of time. Thank you very much. That's all I got.
Amy?
We have elections coming up starting next Friday. You can start absentee voting. That will be here at City Hall. So January nineteenth is forty-six days before the presidential primary, which will take place March fifth. Questions or anything election related, I'm happy to answer, so send them my way.
Mayor, council, I just got a couple of things tonight. Update on the wellhead treatment plant. They poured the base slab and the floor in there. The walls of forms are set. They're putting the rebar in and tying that off for the walls. The walls should be poured this week on Thursday, I believe. So they're moving right along. And then once they've removed the wall forms, they're going to start setting the wall forms for the actual tanks below the building. So they're moving right along. We've also been getting a lot of submissions and stuff. The two biggest submissions for the pressure vessels are in and Black and Veach are working through those things now. Hopefully they'll get those done in a couple of weeks and we can get those into production as soon as possible.
Are we ahead, behind, or on schedule so far?
We're kind of on schedule.
Great. You know what I'm saying? We are on schedule or we're behind or we're ahead. There's three options.
I kind of did the diplomatic one there. We're on schedule. I say we're on schedule.
Thank you.
Oh, just one thing on parks. We're going to try and make some ice over the next couple of weeks. I think this could be the opportunity to get it done, so we'll see where we go with that.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Last Tuesday, Wednesday, the Truck Committee had an opportunity to go out to Pierce Manufacturing in Appleton, and we conducted our pre-construction meeting. So we will have another meeting midway through that process. There is like three thousand-ish trucks in front of ours, so kind of gives you an idea we're out a ways. And then next Tuesday, we'll be conducting the interviews for the Assistant Chief position.
Evening, Mayor, members of the council. Just to let you know, Officer David Johnson will start his leave for military on January seventeenth, and he wanted me to pass on his gratitude to the City Council and Admin for their support while he's gone.
No updates, sir?
I don't really have any updates, but I sent Zach an email. Yeah, sent Zach an email in reference to your email. I'm just hoping that moving forward here, we can get after some of these things that have been kind of sitting on the shelf for a long period of time.
That's the plan. That's why the email got sent out. Twenty twenty-four will be a busy year for a lot of things, and we're going to try to get rid of and knock off a lot of those things we've been just twiddling our fingers on.
Happy New Year.
That's all I got.
I did have one. Oh, so apparently we discovered that those massive signs are already in violation of our. Can we get letters out to them?
Yep.
Clean them up? Cool. That's all I got.
Well, I will task John and Tori with getting letters and stuff.
Just one thing from me. I saw an email today, actually, that the League of Minnesota Cities Day on the Hill is coming up on March seventh. I would like to attend that. It's okay with everybody, and I would encourage anybody else to go to that. It was a, I went to it last year. It was definitely worth my time and, you know, as, I mean, we had some big things on the table that turned out to be very timely to get some more information on most things, so. So I'd like to go again, and I encourage anybody else to go too.
Is that, is that during the early morning or what?
It's all day.
It's all day?
Yep.
I've got four things. So the fire relief, past week before voted to start the process to dissolve the relief as of February twenty-ninth, so I wanted to update the council on that. What, a year ago, up here, we talked about plow gates, Marty, for the plows, and they go past driveways?
Okay.
I did some research today. Spokane, Washington is using them, and they aren't as expensive as I expected. So they range from twelve to thirty thousand a piece, depending on the truck. But they actually had their welder make some themselves, and it cost them like five grand. So I don't know if we have a welder, but maybe there's where we can sit in there. I'll send you and Zach the information so you have it, but I think it's something we talked about looking into. I don't know if we ever heard back on, so.
We did a little bit of research on that, but never even pursued it too far. But if you've got some information, just send it to me and we'll take and dig into it.
Perfect, thank you. And then I have just a question for staff. Have we looked into the Republic Service complaint email that we received? Has a citizen been contacted? Perfect.
Yep, that entire street had been missed and issues been resolved. It was a new driver error, and they will get additional training tomorrow, and it will not be an issue going forward.
Perfect. And the last but not least today is National Law Enforcement Appreciation Day. I just want to give a special thank you to our law enforcement team in Dayton and the neighboring supporting communities. So thank you for that. That's all I have.
All right. Council business. Item G. Official appointments designations.
So if you would like just to go through that resolution and fill in the blanks, or you want to keep it exactly the same as previous year or?
Does anybody have issues with where they're at now or want to change?
Nope.
Nope. I'm content with.
Okay. We always suggest a change if you want one. If not, it's not required, but we always suggest a change if there's any interest. Do you want to provide an update? Metro Cities, when we finally got some information on that, right now, I think we had designated Scott. I'm assuming he didn't attend anything last year to Metro Cities. It is, there is a meeting in the third Thursday of April, and then the third Thursday of November for Metro Cities, and then otherwise, there's three meetings. July, June, July, July, August, September. So there's, there's five meetings a year for Metro Cities.
And we did just fine.
We did.
Different committees.
Exactly zero of them. So if we could get involved in that, that would be great. We pay thirty-four hundred dollars a year for that.
Membership?
Membership. And if we're not going to utilize it.
Yeah.
I don't know why we're paying thirty-four hundred dollars because it's not like it's three hundred bucks.
Well, there's a lot of information that comes across the email.
Yeah, I don't, yeah, don't disagree. We're not getting anything for it, but just be.
I'm okay keeping the way we had it if everyone else is.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll, we can only go up, right?
Is that one, Scott, that you don't want to do?
I don't, personally, I don't see the point. I mean, I'm going to go to just as much. So if somebody else wants to go, go for it.
You want to switch?
Sure, I'll take it.
There you go.
I don't really care about how it's not been with all the other cities. It just doesn't interest me at all.
Once in, once in April, once in November, and then there's technically three of them once in there for two hours. And it's in the morning, nine to eleven thirty. They're not.
The, the E D A, we had talked last year about dropping that to one council member. Is there any, are we planning doing that? Or it's been a year, I haven't heard anything since.
I've heard a little bit of scuttlebutt about that. They're going to get their own council going, apparently their own board and all that kind of.
Huh?
Yeah, there's, there's some surprises coming. Whether or not it makes any difference, I mean.
Do they have the power to do that? They have the power to create their own subcommittees?
Oh, subcommittees, they might.
Yeah. Whatever, we'll see where it goes.
So we want to leave it for now with two.
I don't care.
I have no, it's answer box, so it's not me.
It's not, it's not a, it's just like the city's thing. It's not a repressing deal, so. It can be, but I mean, look at where we've gone and what we've done, so.
All right, so is that kind of wrap it up?
If the, if the Fire Relief Association does dissolve, that would then remove that one off of the list, just so that everyone's aware.
Yeah. All right, I need a motion in a second.
I'll motion.
I'll second.
Any more discussion on that? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously. Item H, Personnel Policy Update.
Yes, good evening, Mayor, members of council. We have the personal policy in front of you tonight. There is a needed change, and then there is a change that was directed at the last meeting, which I got filled in on, which is related to the military leave. I made both of those updates. The required, required one is the E S S T. time, which is required by the state. There is one adjustment I need to make that I did not make on this, and that is to add Juneteenth, which was also added during this legislation last year, but I did not update it on the personal policy because I was focused on the E S S T. time. So we will add that as well, just so that you're aware. If we look at the personal policy, we would like to make that amendment as well to add that to the holiday because it is a state and a federal holiday now, so. But otherwise, I'm, I will stand for any questions you may have about those. And if anything that I did related to the adjustments, which were in red, please let me know when I can adjust them.
So it looks like we also added paying the delta. Is that? Where'd that come from?
That was the League of Minnesota Cities.
The delta for?
You're talking about?
Military leave.
A military leave you're talking?
Yep.
Yeah, so the, it would be the full city contribution for benefits is what I.
The, the delta would be the pay, so.
Oh, sorry, the pay, yep.
If you made under, in the military, if you made under what you made as a city employee, the city would pay the difference. And that was voted on and approved.
Yep. In this instance, I'm just wondering if we, if that's, that's something we ought to put in the policy or?
Yeah, I mean, we can. To be honest, I would have guessed that the military probably pays at least what we pay typically for employees, but maybe not. I don't know.
What if it's you?
Then I would.
Said, what if it's?
What if it's me, then yeah. I mean, I don't know. I'm not in the military, so I can't tell you.
Well, I think in this case, it sounded like you was, but I just, I, it's just a general question. I mean, part of.
I think, I think that's under the state and federal that you have to pay the delta.
The pay delta?
Yep.
Oh.
It's required for them.
Yep.
It's not required for the city, so that's why I wanted to add it.
It's required for who?
State and federal requires that the, they, as the employer
Yep.
will pay that.
That delta and pay.
But it's not law that cities have to do it, and so it's our choice, I guess.
Man, in the end, it's.
If we're doing it, it should be in the policy.
Yeah, I, I think I agree with that. Okay.
Yeah, I have no, you know, skin in this game at all, but just more or less, I want to make sure that we're following what city councils identifying in.
I thought that was what we.
Yep, that's exactly, that's why I put it in there is because that's what we put at the last meeting. Or discussed in a, discussed and approved, whatever.
Okay. Any other questions for this? Need a motion in a second?
I'll make a motion to approve with the Juneteenth Amendment.
Thank you.
Second?
I'll second.
Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. All right, motion carries down zero. River Road Ditch Stabilization Project.
I'll try it.
We're smoking.
Can you make that?
You understand that too?
I'm like, ah, it's like seven forty. No, it's not.
Oops, sorry.
Totally.
Evening, Mayor, council. Tonight, we're looking at the River Road Ditch Stabilization Project, which includes the improvements to a ravine between Dayton River Road and the Mississippi River, located as shown on the map. It's east of Wondale, west of Vicksburg, laying between the, the properties located at one six six three zero and one six seven five zero. As indicated on the aerial, the ravine generally follows the gray line that's outlined there. Just a little bit of a closer look on what these projects involve, involve. We go in and remove the deadfall and some of the debris and clean up the channel, if you will, and then do what's called armoring, just a placement of rock along the shores of the embankment so it doesn't continue to erode away. And then there's some ditch checks that are called, which are just periodic barriers on there to slow the water down, just to prevent further erosion, so. And just to note, on the upstream end, which is on the left on the screen, the county did complete a project in twenty twenty-three. They did some culvert improvements, and they did stabilize part of this ravine with their project, but then they didn't take it any farther than that. So that's what prompted the city to look at. Let's continue it down to the river and kind of finish the project, if you will.
Do you know why they didn't? I mean, they did every other ravine. It just strikes me as odd.
I, I don't know. They didn't really give an explanation. They just told us their scope and moved forward with it. And we actually, we did talk to them about adding this to their project, even if there was a cost share, and they, they weren't interested in pursuing that. But they said, by all means, it can continue the process downstream, so. So we did. So just a little, little background, it is a ravine. There's been significant erosion in there. The adjacent property owner actually has some concerns about it continuing and impacting one of his accesses down towards the, the river along his property. So it is noted as, as poor conditions and warranting improvements. As I noted, Hennepin County did see some improvements on the upstream end. The property owners are, we've talked to both of them. We've actually walked the site with both of them, and they are supportive of the project and in favor of, of completing it. So because we couldn't get it incorporated into the county project, what we said is, okay, let's go find some grant money so we can use that to pay for the project. So we, we have submitted twice. This has been going for about a year. We were unsuccessful on both attempts through two different programs. However, and I think it was either late November, maybe, or early December, one of the two, we were contacted that they found additional funding through one of the programs, and they said, we can at least partially fund your project using the excess if, if you're interested, so. We said absolutely, and on that note, I want to point out, I apologize, I did make an error in the council packet. I said it would be a hundred percent funded through grants and watershed. As you'll see, it's a significant part of it, but it's not a hundred percent. So I was using the old pricing and the old grant amount when I wrote that, so I apologize for that error. That's confusing. So the project cost is estimated around a hundred and five thousand. We'll know more as we get into it, as we just pay for the amount of material that they use, if you will. That includes the construction, the engineering, and then a little bit for any publications or notifying of, of folks or other expenses that might be incurred with the project. The funding, as mentioned, the grant, the original amount was higher than the thirty-two, but that's what they had available. It was right around thirty-two thousand to be used. We did go to Elm Creek Watershed and asked them to participate in the remaining amount. They agreed, but they do have a fifty thousand dollar cap, so that's the most they can contribute to any single project such as this. So it does leave the city of Dayton with a portion of responsibility for the project. Ideally, we come in lower because we need less material, but we, we wordly won't know until we get into more of the design and get a little more information on it. But that's the, the breakdown as we see it. So if there's interest in moving forward with it, we recommend approving the engineering services to.
What was the amount the county was going to throw into it?
Fifty thousand. Oh, no, I'm sorry, thirty-two thousand.
Thirty-two.
Thirty-two thousand. The watershed was fifty thousand.
Where would that twenty-three come out?
That would come out of stormwater.
Oh, and that's.
If we get partway through this project, can you stop? As in like, you know, if you start at the top and work your way down or wherever?
Eighty-two thousand dollars worth?
What?
Eighty-two thousand dollars worth?
Well, it's a hundred and five.
My, well, my other concern is it says it's a hundred and five and ends up being a hundred and fifty, and I don't want to. I, I'm halfway backing at the twenty-three candidly, and I definitely don't want to be more than that. So, I mean, we sat up here and debated twenty-three thousand dollars in the budget pretty heavily, so.
Yeah.
I have a hard time with twenty-three thousand dollars, honestly.
Sure, yeah.
That's our water fund is, is in.
Oh, that's, yeah. We don't have any major. Currently out of the budget. It would not be out of, out of the operation of the general fund of the city.
So I guess to, to answer your question, there, there is some flexibility, if you will, to prioritize the improvements. So if it does look like the costs are going to go in large excess, if you will, yes, we can take away, you know, some of the armoring and maybe the less susceptible places and, and focus more of the cost. So there is some flexibility with, with the project costs during design and, and even through construction to some extent.
Here's where I am on this deal, and I was totally okay with the idea of, I mean, how can you not be if it's all going to be funded from, from another source? I mean, this thing says totally funded eighty-two thousand bucks secured from Elm Creek Watershed. Now, now all of a sudden that's gone. Correct me if I'm wrong. Total funding eighty-two thousand, that, that was the original amount of the project, correct?
So.
Because now all of a sudden we're thirty percent higher than that.
Yeah, so, and I apologize for the confusion in there. These numbers were put together before we had a defined scope, just to get the money, just to get the request in. So there, there's actually varying levels in the different requests to try to meet the criteria of the, the grant requests. And then again, only a portion of it was available, so that's, it was capped at the thirty-two. One of the requests actually went in for seventy-five thousand because there was, there was no, we didn't know what it would be. We looked at it and said, yeah, there's a ravine that needs some rock. How much might it be? We threw a number at it to get our name in for the, the grant. We've looked at it closer now and realized there's more rock than we anticipated.
And you think you can kind of phase this?
We can, we can, we can prioritize areas. I mean, if, if the, if the goal is to say, city of Dayton doesn't want to contribute any money to this, you know, we could just lessen the, the project scope and just say, let's get the highly susceptible areas and we'll just risk the rest would be the option.
Is there any, I'm going to ask a question because is there any engineering adjustment that we can make? I was not aware that we're going to have a thirty-two percent engineering fee on this.
Thirty-two thousand.
Yeah, well, thirty, sorry. Yeah, fifty percent of total construction and thirty, thirty percent of the total cost is going to be engineering, it seems.
Well, I mean, we, we only build for what we use, but the requirements of the grant takes a lot more administrative effort for the, for the work itself that we are dealing with private property. We're seeking land rights to, to get onto the property. If any of those are relieved of engineering services, you don't have to pay them. In other words, if you want to do them in-house, I mean, that's a way to potentially save money to the project as well.
So who's pushing this project? The citizens, Stan Tech, the city of Dayton? Like, who's the driving force behind this project?
It was a request of the, the property owners originally.
Okay.
But it, it is definitely in compliance and a project heavily supported by the watershed as well.
How much money do we have in stormwater?
Oh, it's probably fine.
Two point eight million?
Um, so it, it's feasible. Just say, just say we go with eighty-five grand. And I don't care if we throw in three thousand bucks, it's no big deal, but we limit it at eighty, eighty-five grand to get, get it done. I agree with what Zach's saying, that thirty-two percent is, if you knock that down to ten or fifteen, that's fifteen, twenty grand right off the bat. I'm, I'm okay with it if we keep it at that eighty-five grand. Whatever we get for that, do it.
Okay.
I mean, to me, it's got to be done, so. Doesn't have to be, but.
This is a request coming.
We created a problem.
Yeah, coming from the property owners. We looked at it to begin with, to have it covered one hundred percent by the city of Dayton, and it said, does that really make sense? Total dollars of the city to be used on this person's property, probably not, which is why we looked at the grant process to begin with.
Yeah.
Overall, if there's a project and it affects a neighborhood and multiple residents, it's probably a good idea to look at it with stormwater funds in total because that's what they're there for. But if only affects two residents, it seems like it's more of a dedicated thing for those two residents than it is for the entire city of Dayton to pay for, so. Which is why we initiated the grant. We looked at the grant multiple times, and I know Jason submitted at least three times for this grant, and, you know, we, we got basically some quote unquote unfound money from the grant. I don't even know how that's possible, but.
Yeah, I was going to comment on that.
I don't know how we found unused money.
How do I get out of it?
Correct, yeah, so.
I mean, the other, the other solution is, is you. Part of the issue here is, is the, the, the original eighty-two thousand was all wet to begin with, and now we're throwing real numbers at it and.
Yeah, these are estimates too. The estimated construction is totally estimated. I'm assuming you're just throwing some general numbers.
Approximately length of the swale and how much rock it might take. We don't have any real data to go off of yet, so. It could, it could come in lower, it could come in higher, but again, we could prioritize and, and hit the highly susceptible areas and just concentrate on those. If, if capping at a certain dollar amount is what's preferred, then that's fine. There, I will point out, there's no match on this, so there's not any money required to be spent by the city. So we, we could say not a penny over eighty-two.
Eighty-two first and then.
That, that is an option.
Look at, look at it later to see if we need to fund it more, or is that?
To, to look at the design and then see what it's looking like?
Well, yeah, I mean, if we can stage it as you were talking about or, or look at, what's the term? Not add-ons.
Kind of phase it or?
Yeah.
Yeah. Or an alternate, for example.
Alternate.
We could maybe even bid an alternate in quantities. We could just put a rock quantity on there. A lot of times what we would do on this is, is have, we have a, generally a pretty good idea. We have a pretty solid plan and, and quantities, but often we will have somebody else there directing and say, you know, add more here, do this, because it's kind of an on the fly, just to make sure that things don't get missed and we don't waste material either, so. I mean, we can do that and just say we're limited at this amount of rock, which is the expensive part.
Yeah.
But did you say eighty-five? You want to make that? You wanna make that?
I'll make the motion that we go to 85 and...
In total?
And stop it there.
So you're talking the city doing three?
If that's what happens, I mean, number one, we don't have any rock-solid numbers, so maybe it comes in at 80, I mean... And if it does come in at 85, you...
I just wanna make sure I understand the motion, that's all.
You don't let 3,000 stop it, I mean...
Okay, need a second on that.
I'll second it.
Any more discussion?
Yeah, just to, I mean, a lot of this is a little bit of a throw at a wall, and I understand kind of that's the phase we're at without designing it. I would, you know, encourage you to, you know, not use up your whole fee and, in that end, we, you know, it's a ditch. And I understand you need to control the water, and it, there's, there's ways that you would do that. But I'm still, I don't know, struggling a little bit with the proportion of engineering fees to the total cost of the project. And so I think, you know, value engineering on your own time would, I don't mean free, I mean, looking at, you know, what's the scope of effort needed and what's the gain as the design progresses, that we try to keep that as reasonable as possible.
I'll second what David said and add that we spend a lot of time and money with Stantec, and so it's maybe an opportunity for some good work.
What's a construction timeline look like for a project this size?
It's gonna depend on stockpiling, I'm guessing.
Where's that stuff go between those two properties there? If you gotta bring material and equipment?
Well, all the access has to come from the east. And he's got a driveway that goes down to that area, so we'll need a right-of-entry or to chase down and get... We've been in contact with them, and he's more than willing. But to get land rights in it, I don't know if there's sufficient space to start stockpiling material. If not, that's gonna really drag out the timeline, I suspect. If they can only bring it in as fast as they can place it, instead of bringing in large loads and just kind of working with that ongoing pile, but... If I were to just guess, assuming all the scheduling goes together, maybe it's a two-week project. It's not a long duration.
Right.
They will have several crews, 'cause they'll go in and they'll thin out trees and take out what's needed, and then they'll have small equipment moving and kind of shaping and...
Can that be timed to occur when the county has the road closed next summer?
That was gonna be my next question, David, was, can we align it with something like that, so the downtime?
We can shoot that, just 'cause it's not the best driveway for an approach.
Well, and I think they're gonna have a bunch of stuff staged out, even on the road, possibly too, with when they're clearing and hauling all the stuff off, possibly.
The city project's a mill and overlay, and it's certainly still do it with the closure, but I expect that to be a pretty short duration.
Yeah.
But we can try to align it with it. We don't have a set schedule with them, but that's certainly something we could incorporate in.
Is the grant timer in?
There seems to be flexibility, we didn't, we weren't notified of anything that would...
Is it possible we could kind of table this until we get better definitions? If we're gonna push it out till next summer?
Well, the definitions come with the design, which is the first step of this. Yeah, we could do that. Another one, we were unsure if contractors would want to do this under summer conditions or wait for a freeze-up. But the area does, it's intermittent flow, so the area does dry out pretty well, and it's a pretty firm ground. We've walked the site a couple times, so I suspect they'll be fine doing it, but we may get feedback from bidding contractors that wanna wait until, say, next to some, well, maybe next January or February, if we have another year like this, but...
Yeah, I just feel like timing is probably one of those things, like, I don't wanna shut down Dayton River Road or a lane of it again for like three years in a row, so...
Oh, there wouldn't be any shutdowns for this, but there would be truck hauling.
That's what I'm saying, is like, another inconvenience on top of another inconvenience, if we can kind of stockpile them a little bit together and just have the contractors work in kind of a timeframe of each other, I think that'd just be better.
Sure.
You mentioned tree removal, is there tree replacement going back in afterwards?
It's deadfall, so no, there wouldn't be any plantings. Sometimes they'll do willow stakes, which are just small trees that go in just to stabilize the sides. I don't know if that'll be utilized on this or not. Yeah, it's mostly just to get the dead stuff out of the way to make the channel shaped.
So I got a motion for capping it at 85. Motion and second. Any more discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Who's opposed, say no. Motion carries 5-0. Item J.
Okay.
What do you mean, "okay"?
Evening, mayor members of council, now we got the fee schedule to go through. Oh, sorry, J, sorry. I guess I'm just gonna go through page by page and go through the red line items. Again, staff hit the big ones to try to really focus on the main items that we have had a lot of conversations with, whether it's with residents or with developers or with internal staff. And we'll go through them, if you have any questions, I'm just gonna start off on page one of the fee schedule, and if you have any questions, let me know, and then we'll go through each page here, and hopefully it shouldn't take more than a few minutes, but. Hey, page one, do you have any questions on... Only one change? Everybody have it in front of them?
Yeah, 10 to 12%.
Yep. Page two, rental housing was the only changes, rental licenses?
Did have a question, go ahead.
Why so high?
Yeah, I was gonna ask that.
It's, it's high, only because we've never adjusted the rental housing license fees for, I don't even know how long, it's been forever. This is actually fairly low. There are multiple communities that have $500 per year on rental licenses, and the reason why is because we have a lot of more police activity that typically happens at rental housings. We have to do inspections of them, and then we also have a lot of admin time with tracking them, so we have to track them and make sure we set out letters and mailings, and that's why the need is needed.
Covering some of their costs.
To change, to cover the costs. We are, right now, we are losing our butt on some of them, and then we have multiple houses this year that had so much police activity that...
So you're saying this is in line with other communities?
This is totally in line, and actually, less than a lot of communities around us.
Really?
Yep.
A lot of communities will even have programs where if you are the owner and you have to take a class to find the correct tenants, to, I mean, there's usually a lot more involved with.
Sure.
Seeing as how you brought it up, the amount of police activity, can you also include something in there where you have three violations, your SOL, you're, "We're not gonna renew it"?
I don't know if we can, I would, I would question Chief Enga on that one.
I think we have issues with 30 or 40 visits on them.
We currently have it in it under the public nuisance portion of the rental...
We can revoke it.
We can revoke their rental license.
What can we base that on?
Under so many...
So many incidents or...
Drug activity, other calls for service, we can base it off of.
That's just in our ordinances, and that's given to administration, which we had to invoke this year unfortunately, for a temporary mark of time.
Oh, is that how we dealt with that house? Okay. Did it clean it up real quick?
Mm-hmm. You did.
Okay.
Noah, comments, I'll keep moving. Page three had nothing, page four had nothing. There might be some changes here with three and four, if Danielle had some time underneath her belt. She was here for approximately two weeks before, I said, "Do you have any changes?", and she said, "I don't even know", so. We may have some changes related to activities and stuff. Page four is one change, yep, so this is, page four and five have kind of the same change with failed compliance checks. We have been relying on the county, from what I understand from Chief Enga, to do these compliance checks. They say they've been doing them, we're unsure if they have been or not, and so we completed them this year and had three violations, so. We don't have anything in our licensing, and we'd like to put this, and that fine is for the establishment, correct? So there is a charge for the individual if they fail it, but nothing for the establishment. And so this would be establishing that with, having a fine for the establishment. A lot of communities have it where if you have multiple violations, you are then revoked of your license. I'm unsure if we want to go that route at this point, but this is just the first step to at least have something.
I think you do want to go there.
How often do we do, I mean, well...
I'm unsure, again, we've had Hennepin County doing it before. We did our first one here just a few months ago, but I think we're supposed to do it at least annually.
So alcohol and tobacco once annually. We're gonna tend to do a little more, being that we used to do the tobacco checks annually. Hennepin County was saying they were doing the alcohol checks, but we never got confirmation that that was occurring. So now that we're doing it, we'll probably start with two a year, and then go down as needed.
So, to my question is, and that's why I did not add it in here, because I was not sure what the council's direction would be, is that we could start off with one and see if it goes well for this year, and then if we have a lot of violations again, we can then add it, or would we like to add something now to say, "Here's one failed compliance check", and then we have to have a second one and a third one, and we can then tier those up? A lot of communities do that, they vary though. Some of them are really high at first, and then you get like two chances and you're done. Some of them give you four chances and then you're done, some of them are three.
I mean, if we're doing them twice a year, if they fail, fail three in a row, that means that they failed for a year.
Correct.
So I'm okay with three in a row on that, and candidly, I also think the fee is very small. $300 seems to give a very small fee, I would rather see those fees much higher.
Like I said, every community was different. Some of them, first one is like a smaller fee, which is like the $300 fee.
They tiered it or something like that?
And then I tier it. The second one is like $1,500 or something, and then the third one, again, it's not to make money, it's to... The more, the more you hurt them, the, in the, in the money, that quickly fixes the problem typically, so.
Just don't, 300's enough to really...
Then, again, this is just a shot in the dark of a number. We reviewed probably six communities, and like I said, they varied, and every one of them was totally different, so.
I mean, to me, to me, if you went 300 and then double it on the second one, and the third one, there is no third one, you're out.
I'd more than double it on the second one. I'd be okay at 1,500 on the second one.
Oh, yeah, I don't care.
The worst one I saw was $5,000.
Well, would that be, so how does that, would that be two in a row, or would that be...
Correct. I would think we would probably do it in an annual basis, maybe I think it was in a row.
Correct, so after the, after an establishment fails, the, we'll do compliance checks on a regular basis until, to make sure that they're doing their classes and passing each one. So currently, we had three fails, so we're doing every other month compliance checks to make sure that they continue to pass until, so we make sure they're following what we require.
So if they fail the first one, then you go out every other month, so...
Correct.
If they fail two months from now, then you go back out again in two months, basically, within that timeframe? So maybe the fourth one, then we revoke the license, that'd be six months and four fails?
So we could either establish it based on an annual, or we could do consecutive. So you can do either-or based on...
That's where I'm wondering a little bit, 'cause the license is annual.
License is annual.
So we sort of, aren't we pretty much working with that?
That's what I would technically utilize as the, within a year. So if you said that Chief Enga's gonna go out there every other month, we'd say, "You have one failed compliance check within a year, you start with this. If you have two within a year, then you get to this, and if you have three within a year, then you're done." That's from what I'm gathering, and, or we can do four, or whatever you guys wanna do, I'm fine with whatever, I just... And this is a start.
Three strikes, you're out?
I like three strikes. I think so, that's over a relatively short period of time, I mean, they're not getting a joke at that point.
Yeah, so my question is then, if you want to do three strikes, you're out for both of them, that is totally fine. What would you like the second failed compliance check to be? And these would be based, and I will make sure to write these annually on the top, it'll be liquor slash tobacco licensing, and then it'll say dash annual. That way, everyone knows it's on an annual basis, so what would you like the second failed compliance check?
Can we add cannabis to that too, because we're gonna have to be doing cannabis checks too?
Yep.
Same, same, same.
So do we only get 500 when they fail the first one, and 15 when they fail the second, and then third one gets revoked?
Third one, there is no fee, you're done.
Yeah, so...
I mean, collect the fee and that's...
Five and 15, yeah.
That's fine, that's fine, my... Is there, is there any...
So five on the first one, 500, and then 15 on the second one?
Just for discussion, is there any less, do we view tobacco worse than, or less than alcohol or not?
I do.
You just make them all the same?
They are both 21, all, all three of them are 21s.
Easier to make it all the same.
Good point, good point.
Although I would say that, yeah, you could view either one of them differently. I think they're all 321. If they were different with ages, then maybe you look at them differently, but now if they're all 321, I mean... Or assume we view them all the same. It sounds okay, are we, consensus 500, 1,500, three strikes, you're done.
Yeah. That should fix the problem.
I will update that on the fee schedule before it gets posted, just so everyone's aware.
Will you also make, when we make these changes, will you make sure the businesses that have these are made aware of it? I know they should be paying attention, especially 'cause it's on here, but I would recommend that we send a letter to them, let them know that it's been changed, that way they're not...
We will provide it with the licensing when we send it out that says this is the, just so that you're aware, here's the updated checks, so that everyone has it, so it's not like it's hidden or anything, 'cause that's not the idea.
Is it, well, they've already applied for them, but this year, though?
I have not sent out the renewal for the tobacco. The liquor licenses are done and complete.
We can let them know.
Those are in June, but...
As I say, you only have a couple of those, don't you? Yeah.
Okay, section three building, there was a couple of, you know, just more or less changes with formatting and stuff. The only one that changed was the deck permit. I had heard something from the mayor about going back to the 260 and $1 surcharge. The reason why it was put in here as a change in valuation was based on just our surrounding communities. Technically, I thought the fee was 150, which is why I misread in 260. Technically, we, our current costs are roughly $260 per fee if we review the decks between reviewing with zoning stuff, reviewing with compliance, to make sure we have all of the documents for it, and then having Metro West do their three reviews of the deck. It's about 260 bucks total, of actual costs. If you want to have, like I said, a little bit of buffer, raise it to 300, we have not adjusted this fee, and I don't know the history of it, the mayor did have the history of why we changed it, and the fee was set at 2020 when we adjusted it, correct? Before I got hired.
Right around then, yeah.
Okay, there has been some increase in fees, but again, or costs, but...
The, the, given that it's covered under the building code, a lot of that stuff is by value. This is one that we're allowed to set a hard fee on, or a fixed fee. Some cities, I couldn't find the other one, but one of them. The problem with these, building code in general, is it looks at value to figure out what the permit is worth, not the amount of work needed, which is, which is also why cities got in trouble with the lawsuits, because those things are not linear. Anyways, so this one, I had a, right off the bat, I had a resident contact me, and they paid, they said somewhere around $800 for a permit, a deck permit.
Well, decking's not cheap right now either.
Well, and that's part of the problem is, is the amount of work to inspect this and review the plan is fixed. I mean, it's, it...
Our costs are somewhere around $260 currently, just based on current hourly rates, time spent, our process, review, so on and so forth, it's about 260 bucks, so we are not making, we are making exactly zero dollars roughly. And then if a deck goes wrong, like we have multiple inspections, we're losing money, just... Whenever, whenever gaining any money, we're always either covering it or losing money.
So Ramses is at like 175, they may be losing money on theirs. I, you know...
Shouldn't say losing money, I should say covering tax levy, now covering that cost.
Yes, now covering the cost. But I know in other things, we, we do, we do cover our costs, so. I would, I would prefer this just stay put, instead of going off of a value. And like I said, the reason for that is because a 20 by 20 deck is gonna be, is gonna have roughly the same amount of work as a 40 by 40 deck. So, I mean...
From the city side.
From the inspection side, and yeah, for what we're putting the fees towards. I mean, it's not exactly even, but it's pretty close, so. That's why I don't, I've never liked this based on evaluation. The problem is for buildings, we can't fix that until the legislature fixes it, but for this, we can't.
Sorry, Ms. Mayor. Zach, did you look at how many, how much we got in fees last year? Or how much it cost us last year for deck permits? And how many deck permits we put in to figure out what the actual average was per deck permit?
I think, like I said, it's somewhere between 260, 300. I think that's honestly been above the number.
I'm fine with the flat fee, I think that makes the most sense, I think it's a good point. I don't think we should be losing money on them, so I don't know how we do that if it's 260 or 275. If it's between 260 and 300, then whenever, I'm okay either way, I just don't want, I don't think we should be subsidizing it with other taxes, is more mine.
No, I think, well, I think that should be our philosophy on all our stuff all over. We can't use it everywhere, that we should be covering our costs, and, you know, essentially, essentially that.
I mean, to me, the small caveat here too is, is that, and we changed some other stuff in our fees back then to... I mean, it's, a lot of our housing stock is getting on, getting old, and updating, improving that housing is a benefit to the city.
Mm-hmm.
And so, uh, that was, that was some of the other thought put in back then. That's why I think we, we had, I don't, I don't remember exactly what we did, but on, uh.
Houses that are twenty years or older.
Yeah, we did a, we gave a, oh.
There's a discount.
Twenty year older house gets a discount on permits.
Yeah, it was something like that, so, yeah.
There, that is later on.
I mean, to me, yeah, you, you want people to, to improve their, their housing.
So I just see, I just need some direction on the deck permit. Are we okay with the number? Do you want to change it a little bit and increase it a little bit? Do we wanna change it back or do we? It sounds like, I guess, some like discussion, change, change it from the valuation thing we have, but back to a flat fee. Um, I just don't know, do you wanna keep it at two sixty? Do you wanna keep it, raise it a little bit? What's the council, councils?
I heard two seventy-five, I think that gets us in the range of what it's costing us.
Yeah, I think it's pretty close.
Okay.
Okay, I'm gonna go two seventy-five.
Do we need to adjust the one below it then? Changing all permit, that's based on valuation states.
That has been like that forever. I mean, that hasn't changed.
Well, my, my point is if we wanna move to a, to a, oh.
We could probably go down the list.
Well, okay, so maybe the better way to do this is, let's, let's.
But we have not had a lot of those, that's why I didn't get highlighted.
Okay, so maybe the best is this is, let's draw attention to the ones that are highlighted in red and then maybe we task the staff with going back and figuring out what the, the actual cost is on the ones that we, we can do it that way and then come back to us a second time. Are we okay with that? Or do we just wanna leave them? Cause I don't know if they're gonna know the answer either, say what's it gonna cost, so I'd rather give them.
I have no clue what it's gonna cost, I mean.
How many retaining wall permits did, did you, uh, guessing, you know?
That were over four foot.
Maybe, maybe two or three, maybe, I mean.
Yeah, that's not.
Keep them under the four foot.
Yeah.
Yeah, sure.
Do that.
Um.
Good. So, okay, two seventy-five is what I heard, that's fine.
Yeah.
Um, fence was the other one we adjusted and that's a hundred dollars. Um, so that's gonna cover the costs, uh, for whatever reason, we, we're not doing inspections of where the actual fence was laid out at. Um, I'm unsure what the reasoning for that was for.
The plan is reviewed though, right?
Um, the plan is reviewed, however, there's never any confirmation that it actually goes where the plan says.
So.
So.
Yeah, I know, and, and.
So that, the adjustment from fifty to a hundred dollars is to make sure that we actually have somebody going out there to review where the, you say you're gonna put it here, you're sticking to the plan, because we currently weren't having anybody, we'd say, yeah, it's reviewed. And then when you go to put the fence in, there's literally nobody who went out and said, oh, you put the fence where you're supposed to.
Metro West doesn't.
They did not.
Doesn't at all, so I know.
That's why it was fifty dollars, is that covered our cost or in that time, this would then cover the costs of, Metro West would go out there first time just to, they do stakings to make sure it goes in the right spot. Metro also go out there for, I think it's for like ten or fifteen minutes. Check the spots, make sure it's on the right spot where it's supposed to be, and then Metro also go there, do a final inspection just to make sure it got put where it was and then I was in.
And that's, that's gonna happen for a hundred bucks?
Yep, that's the cover cost. It's about fifteen minutes for Metro West time, so it's about, um, twenty-five dollars-ish for them to go out there and do it.
And do we have some sort of a, uh, do we have them sign off that they actually looked at it?
Hmm, yep, they would complete an inspection, just like we have an inspection sheet.
Yeah, they sent out the permit.
So that would, the reason why I want this to happen is because if somebody doesn't put it where it's supposed to be.
Right.
We can go back to Metro West and say, you said it was supposed to be there, that's on somebody else. If we have zoning review, which is what we currently are doing, we have nobody checking to make sure it's actually going where it is, so then we just say, well, we signed off on it, but it was supposed to go here and not four feet that way.
Okay.
Right.
Change my neighbors. That's what the change is for.
Okay.
Major concerns, okay?
Nope.
Cool. Um, other changes here, so fence permits over seven feet, we don't have hardly any of these, but I don't, I will tell you right now, if it's over seven feet, we're gonna have to a lot more than a hundred and twenty-seven dollars worth of cost, because it needs to be engineered and it has to be reviewed with footings and it has to, there's a lot more stuff that goes into it, so that's why it's changed to valuation, because if you're putting a seven feet or higher fence in, you're probably looking at a big fence.
Require a CUP.
Yep, yep, it's, yeah, it's a pretty tense process.
This is in relation to a residential, correct?
Yes, correct, you got it.
Cause I have lots of it over.
Yep, um, the other ones that we changed were, um, mechanical permits or whatever, I don't know why they were based in valuation, couldn't tell you. It should be just be based. And then we also had those.
On that one?
Yep, yep.
Um, it occurs several times on that page, but it says, you know, for a mechanical permit, sixty-one dollars plus five dollars per additional, plus one dollar state surcharge.
Yep.
Five dollars per additional, what?
So it means that, okay, so mechanically you do a furnace and an air conditioner. Technically, we don't wanna charge them sixty-one dollars for the furnace and sixty-one dollars for the air conditioner. If they're gonna go review it, they're probably gonna do them both at the same time, so five dollars is the additional cost to do the air conditioner and the furnace, because Metro West isn't gonna spend more than a minute or two reviewing the air conditioner and the furnace. So that's what per additional means, which is like plumbing and stuff is, five dollars per additional. So if you have a sink, a tub and a toilet, that's three things. So instead of paying sixty-one times three, you pay sixty-one plus ten dollars.
Basically, you're paying a trip charge plus your charge plus the per unit charge.
Which is the plus.
I'm okay with that, I just think we should define what it, I mean.
I could say per additional fixture or something, if you wanted to add something.
Something, define the unit that we're talking about, I guess that's, that's what I'm missing. And it's on several of these lines.
Yeah, they're on every one of them. Um, fireplace, which is if you have two of them, then, you know, again, you're gonna go out there, the trip charge is about sixty-one bucks for to cover our costs. And then you're gonna look at that one and it's gonna take you an extra two minutes, you're gonna walk down the stairs and take a look at the basement and then you're done. And I don't feel like we need to charge sixty-one dollars per one. Otherwise, if it's not per additional, we have to charge sixty-one dollars per fireplace, you look at it per fixture and it seems like it's.
No, I think that's fine, just say what it is.
Okay, yep, nope, that sounds good, yep. And then also, this past year, we, um, included it in the building permit fee, if they were having like fireplaces and air conditioning and stuff. Um, we, I don't know if that was the direction, but we, um, ended up losing money last year on that process, so. Because in the, in the building permit fee, they're looking at framing and everything else and.
Right.
Sixty-one dollars doesn't seem like it's a small, it seems like a small fee. We've, I don't know why we removed it, I think we had a discussion on this Amy a couple of months ago. Correct. Um, we can continue to do that if you'd like to, uh, we.
Uh, you know, but I'd almost say whatever makes it easier and more well-defined, because.
A, a lot of contractors were surprised we had it included in the building permit fee, because normally they do not, and so they were like.
They look at it as a separate.
Yeah, like, oh, yeah, there should be a separate one, because when, um, the building permit fee would come in and it would come from the main contractor, it's losing not, Lennar, and then they would have three or four subcontractors, the subcontractors would never pull the permit, because they didn't have one, because it was included in the building permit fee, so they'd never actually come in and pull a permit. It was all pulled by Lennar, so then they had to go to Lennar to get the inspections and it was just kind of more of a hassle process to do, so. If we added a fee, like I said, that's where the sixty-one bucks comes from.
Yeah, I just thought that was strange that, that those things were not spelled out. I mean, they're, they were line items, but they were
Yes.
Not specifically charged separately.
Correct, yep, and they should be, because again, most of the time, a house builder has subcontractors. When they don't have to come in for a building permit, they're like, I don't know what to do, what do you, what do you want to do now? So that's why we added it back in this year. Any major concerns with that? Okay. No changes there. Page seven, there was no changes. Page eight, um, there was a change to eighty-five dollars an hour, that's based on increased cost with staffing levels and benefits. Um, it was sixty-five dollars an hour for city staff services before, now it's eighty-five. Any concerns? That's just to cover our costs, it's nothing.
So this is just a, a question on page seven, I guess.
Seven, yep, yep.
Um, down at the bottom of it, it says, project recovery rate factor.
Yep.
What is that?
So that is, we will recover our costs, if we have to pay engineering to review your project, we will charge them at the actual cost the engineering charges us. So we, we recover our costs, that's the recovery rate factors that, yeah, we have zero markup, we don't, and some communities will have actual cost plus ten percent or something of what we get charged from engineering to handle administratively, paying their bill and paying the contractor, then invoicing that, um, project so that we have, you know, um, we have an accounting tech that handles all the escrow, so she's invoicing them and collaborating and making an invoice, sending it out to the contractor or the project developer. We don't make any of those, so the rate factor is just actual cost, no markup. Which is what those are. So legal services, miscellaneous consultants, which would be like landform if we had them working on anything. Um, whoever miscellaneous consultants have we used in the past? Yeah, attorney, engineering, so we don't have any markup, essentially is what it is. That's what that actual cost means.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Um. Page eight, page eight there, and this pertains to the, uh, conversation earlier.
Mm-hmm.
Increase in size of the sign, does that mean, are we saying that if you pay a little more money, then you can have a bigger sign? And what are our ordinance does?
No, that means if you wanna increase this existing sign size, you would then come in for a sign permit.
Okay.
And then you have to get, you would get charged based on valuation to review the sign to make sure it meets all of our ordinances.
Okay.
Codes. You cannot pay to increase the sign.
Pay for.
No.
A violation.
No.
And there's one that says.
This so I could charge you a penalty? Yeah, that sounds good.
So this is temporary event signage, I'm assuming that will be covered under the event.
Yes.
Permit changes or large, whatever we're calling them going forward, hopefully that comes in front of us soon.
Yep, we'll work on that.
Okay.
Okay, um, number six, uh, section six, page nine, um, these changes are coming from, um, estimates and timings related to engineering and related to, um, planning about escrow dollars. We seem to always be behind the eight ball on escrow dollars, so essentially we're being a bank for developers. Which is why a lot of the escrow dollars are changing, because it has cost us a lot more money to do these things, reviews. Um, most of the time, it's because the developers are giving us horrible plans and we have to review them six times for them to get them right. And we end up spending three times as much time as we should be and then we end up eating the cost. And then it'd be in the bank for them, because we pay engineering or we pay planning, um, at landform at the time, and, um, then we don't get paid back from the developers for six months or longer, so.
Do we have a?
Which is what that twelve percent change was on the first page, um, that was the change, because we have a ten percent change, but we actually have never used it, so. Don't know why, but now we're looking at extra to actually, um, charge a late fee, so that we aren't losing our butt on interest.
What's our standard payment terms? Do we expect them to pay?
Um, I think it's forty-five days.
Can we shorten that to thirty?
Um, we will be able to, uh, forty-five days, so we have been invoicing them quarterly in developments and now we are looking to do them monthly. So hopefully we won't have as much of those standing outside and outstanding. Um, like I said, we've been doing it quarterly only because of the staff level we had and trying to invoice them. It was very difficult. We are doing it at least by monthly, now we're looking to do it monthly in twenty twenty-four moving forward, so. It will hopefully not be outstanding as much, but no change to the application fees besides the administrative one. That is the reason, the reason it's changing to five hundred is because we're not gonna refund you two hundred dollars of escrow, because likely we're gonna have that much time and just admin subdivision, so. It's just easier, it's just an application fee, then we don't worry about tracking a project.
Okay.
That's what the change for that one is. Otherwise, and no changes of the fees or anything, just the escrow amounts. Uh, same thing on page ten. Um, there is one add, the major one is EAW, EIS, AUAR applications. For whatever reason, we never, um, had these on here, I don't know if it's because we didn't have an application that needed it, but we had one this year related to, um, the DDL Holdings project, Dayton Mixed Use or whatever it was. And we ended up eating all of that cost related to that project, because we never charged a fee for it. And an escrow on a project, so, um, it was at least six grand, if not more. Didn't have a fee for it or an application, so.
Clarification on the fee, like rezoning?
Yep. Uh, what page are you on, sorry?
Nine.
Nine, okay.
If it, it says three hundred dollar, dollar application fee.
Yep.
Fifteen hundred is scratched out.
Yep.
Was it three hundred or was it fifteen hundred?
Um, so three hundred dollars is the application fee, so that's a fee you paid to have the application filled out. Fifty hundred dollars is the escrow amount, so you'd give us a fifty hundred dollars of escrow.
So we're changing that escrow number.
Yes, escrow number is going to twenty-five hundred, and the only reason for that is that we've had many times where it's gone over the fifty hundred dollars.
Yeah.
And then we're asking you to pay us a thousand bucks and then I'll tell you, it's harder to get money the second time than if it is to get the first time, because, um, people just don't wanna pay it after they do it, and then we have to hound them for six months, so. That's, all of the changes related to development are, almost all of them are related to escrows, just because we never have enough escrow money. We are looking possibly to look at an ordinance update to have them, if they get to a certain level, they have to then replenish the bucket essentially, so we aren't becoming the bank for all the developers. They should have enough money if they're developing. Any changes on page ten? That's the only one, was that EAW, EIS, AUAR, hopefully that will help. Not us, lose our butt next year. Okay, no changes on ten, eleven. Um, these only changes came from Chief Enga, digital photos, squad videos, camera videos, we're asking, you know, get paid for some of those, because it just takes us time and cost to do those staff levels. These numbers came from Chief Enga.
Chief, what's a dangerous dog? Or what, what's, what makes someone deemed a dog a dangerous dog?
So after the first bite, we can, uh, deem them potentially dangerous and then after the second bite, they become dangerous.
Oh, thanks.
And then it's doggone.
Doggone.
And the fire inspection fees are where we need to be here, I'm assuming, because there's no changes there. I asked this last year, I'm gonna ask again.
Negative, I have not had time to review. I have some additional ones that I would like to add. Need to add personnel, we need to add apparatus, cost per hour. Um, if we have a hazardous materials incident, that's charged back to the responsible party and I need to review those things, so as we get additional staff, we'll be able to review those.
Fine, thank you.
So for now, again, not looking at those. Um, page twelve, these are all related to the items that you saw with sewer and water, those are just the changes, they are a one percent increase from last year. The only major change we had is related to irrigation accounts only. So we heard from multiple HOAs this year that they were charged multiple thousands of dollars for watering their yards. Again, we want them to water the yards, that's fantastic, however, multiple of them have requested that they can, um, punch a small or shallow point well and probably save a ton of money, and so we don't want them to have to do that. And I think it's more important that we continue on our water use fees, so we changed them to have an irrigation account only. This is only for accounts that have irrigation only. This is only HOAs, it's not related to homes, not related to businesses, nothing with commercial, like it's only related to HOA.
Like their open spaces or?
Yeah, open spaces, yeah. So for example, like, um, River Hills has an HOA that they water a bunch of open spaces on. Hayden Hills has another one that's an HOA that, um, you know, they were built in a timeframe, they were built five million gallons of water in a two-month period. Um, because they're watering all of the, um, the villa area or whatever, so they're saving a ton of space by not having us have a water meter and, um, different water points in either one of the houses, they just have one HOA irrigation, so. We can amend it or not, like I said, there's my, this was my.
I think I'm lost in what, how you're, what you're describing here, so.
Yep.
Um, what it, what makes an irrigation count separate from a residential?
So irrigation accounts get their meter pulled. So they only have a, they only have access to water during the summer months to use for irrigation, like the HOAs would have a, um, a meter that's in basically a holding box.
Mm-hmm.
And then they get that meter pulled in the winter, so that they don't have any water access essentially.
Oh, so the water.
Yeah, so the water is completely off. They still get charged a base fee for having access to the water, but they don't get charged any water.
For example, on River Hills, there's like that, if you drive down River Hills Park where there's that, one's the west side of the road, that's like a hill, and it's all just grass, that's on its own meter. There's nobody, it's not tied to anyone's house, it's just a.
And so this irrigation accounts only is only related to those HOAs or what, meters that we pull annually. Not anything related to, for example, like, um, a Graco who would have an irrigation meter attached there. And that's, that's not what we're talking about here, this is strictly for, to help those HOAs, so that the fees are constantly going up related to their homeowners association, if it's related to watering and such.
The homeowner pays a certain fee to the HOA and the HOA pays the bill.
Yeah.
Correct, you got it. Yeah, and currently, we had, and this, this came up only because we had another, an HOA reach out to us and said, we have to raise our fees by a hundred and fifty dollars a month to pay for your water. And so I said, that's a lot, and he said, it's per house too, so. It's just, it's a lot on the HOAs and the homeowners, if there, is a benefit for us to have good water and, or good grass around.
That's been the whole push to see if they could do those common areas from holding ponds.
Like holding ponds, yeah.
So.
Correct.
You mentioned, uh, shallow well.
Yep.
Do we allow them to put in a shallow well?
I'll defer to Marty on that.
That seems odd.
Um, we.
Yeah, they, they can do it, but there's a DNR per, uh, permit in process to go through and some will, uh, someone qualify for it. Um, we don't want, DNR don't want everybody to be popping in shallow wells all over for irrigation, so, um.
Well, yeah, I, it, to me, it makes sense. I'm just saying, it seems odd that we allow that.
Yeah, we would prefer them not to, which is why we're looking at doing this setup to help with some of the fees, while also.
How does this reduce the fees though? I mean, they're still getting.
They would get charged, but their, their tiers are much higher.
Add a tier.
Tiers are much higher, so instead of paying, if you use five hundred thousand gallons.
I didn't look at.
You're not getting a charge four eighty per thousand gallon over thirty-three thousand, you're only gonna charge three sixty-two. So it saves you, like I said, it adds up quickly once you get to a certain.
Shouldn't we also, um, the irrigation only accounts be then foregoing the sewer?
We do not, yeah, we do not charge on the sewer, that is correct.
Right, so they get the savings from that, they're, they're missing the, the five oh nine per thousand gallons.
Yeah, they do not get charged the sewer, they are only charged water. But again, it does not take long for an irrigation account only, especially if you're wanting a common area to go over thirty-three gallons in two months. Probably go over thirty-three thousand gallons in about a week or less. Three days, four days. Yeah, especially in August. So this was our attempt to discourage a shallow point well being put in because it's going to affect our water system and then we're not going to collect fees on it. And again, we don't know if the DNR will approve it or not, but they can technically apply for one.
Well, I mean, I might argue that if everybody had a shallow well, it would, it would level our water use out pretty flat.
Mm-hmm.
So, but.
Marty, we're doing a lot of work with Leathers Park around the prairie grass, right? The the natural.
Yep.
Are we posting any of that somewhere? So if if communities or HOAs are like, hey, this common space, we don't want waters much. We want to convert it over to prairie grasses so that way it's, you know, requires less watering and it's more drought resistant. Are we posting any of our information that we're doing or how that works there?
I'm waiting till that thing gets established before we start promoting it.
Okay.
But that certainly is something that we can do. I think, you know, the prairie thing is a very acquired taste and, you know, we've tried it in several areas before and we got a lot of pushback on that. So.
It's not easy to establish either.
No, it take a while to establish it. And the maintenance on them can be pretty intense as well.
Yeah. Do you have any major concerns with any of that stuff? I know I explained it quite a bit on page twelve, but. Page thirteen, these are just, again, changes based on where we're at with costs, with one percent changes related to water meter uses fees. And then the trunk area charges and connection fees, which are on page thirteen and fourteen. These are all coming from engineering and or myself after review of them and and where we're at. It's an analyzation every year to figure out how many developable acres we have left and how much our costs and fees are related to our long-term plan. So this is just a simple formula to figure out how many more we have, developable acres we have left and how much it's going to cost us to build out our system, you know, as our best guess. So that's where the new numbers are coming from related to stormwater, sanitary sewer and water. Also, the update from Maple Grove is correct. That's everything that they just passed in their December meeting.
So it's actually on the, on the next page, but did we not have a trail dedication number for residential before?
No, non-residential. We did not have a non-residential trail fee. I am unsure why we didn't because if it was me and you're looking at a commercial, you're not going to use a park, you're going to use a trail.
Yep.
And if you're there working, you're going to go and take a walk on the trail. So I don't know why we never charged them a per acre fee on a trail dedication. So that's something we're looking at implementing this year because they're going to be the ones using it. The fee is relatively the same only because per acre, they're not going to develop only one acre. They're going to develop thirty acres. Yeah, the whole site and they're going to pay thirty times, you know, they're going to pay a hundred grand just to put a building up. Although a family will use the trail probably every day, the workers are likely going to use it if it's nice out at least once or twice a week, if not more. So we never had it, so that's why it's added.
Going back to the WAC and SAC fees, is there a reason we would charge less than Maple Grove charges for their WAC and SAC fees?
Maple Grove's WAC includes their sewer, their trunk area charges as well. So if you look at their, they do not, Maple Grove does not have a trunk area charge. We have a trunk area charge per acre and per unit where Maple Grove does not. So our total units, if you're going to have per unit, you're going to pay four thousand dollars of water per unit and then you're also going to pay five thousand. So that's nine, nine thousand dollars, whereas Maple Grove, you're going to pay three thousand bucks per unit. And again, their WAC charge includes both.
Got you. Thank you.
Yep. Any questions on either one of those? Okay, page fifteen, there was one change related to, I don't know why it's a plan check fee. You can't have twenty-five percent of the plan check fee. That's what we're requesting the type of plan check to be plan check. I don't know why, but. There was a comment that came up from the mayor of, do we want to change that back to sixty-five percent? I am indifferent. Currently, that's part of the litigation and one of our changes was to reduce that twenty-five percent. All of the surrounding communities are still using nineteen ninety-seven building code, which is what this valuation is based off of on page fourteen and fifteen. However, our, ours is actually lower because we are only twenty-five percent of permit fee versus sixty-five percent, which is every community around us that is using the fee schedule. So I am indifferent. We were at sixty-five until twenty twenty-two, twenty-two.
Twenty-two.
Yep, and that's when we adjusted it based on a litigation that was going on that we, because we, the suit with housing first started in twenty twenty-one. As a result of that, we reduced our fee twenty-five percent of the permit fee, which would reduce some of the costs related to the building permit, but.
That was to kind of help compensate for the high volume.
Yes.
But now we aren't going to have that high volume.
We did not see the same volume. I think we saw two hundred and, it's somewhere up, two hundred and three.
Yep, just above two hundred.
Just above two hundred for twenty twenty-three related to housing permits. And those are equivalents. So if a quad home comes in, that's four. That doesn't mean it's one permit. It's four permits there, so. I am indifferent to it. I have no real thoughts, processes. My thought would be to leave it until we get this litigation figured out, but I'm, that's my, that's why it didn't get changed here. But again, I'm, I'm not the council. I don't make the final decision.
Well, so we're, we're not going to get much in the way of permits over the next three or four months. So I mean, we could.
Yeah, they'll be small. They'll be, yeah, we can always review again.
I just, I think in the end, we need to go to sixty-five. We need to go back to what it was. If we don't do that today, we, we should just keep an eye on it. And I really don't think that the, you know, if there's any, any basis to, to throw that verdict out, I'd be surprised, but.
We're just waiting to get through Maple Grove.
Well, I think ongoing, you know, this, this kind of funky, you can't actually do it. Regulation that we're trying to meet here is the philosophy of it is that we're, we, permits should be based on our costs.
Yes.
And if we're doing fewer, fewer houses.
Right.
Then that reduction was based on, and we don't foresee in the next twelve months that that's going to be correct. Then we have every right to adjust our. Well, again, you know, I looked at it from, so Corcoran was a, was a, was in the, in the lawsuit with us. They didn't touch their fees. Everybody else around us is at sixty-five percent and that's consistent, so.
Yeah, that's, that's what's in the ninety-seven B fee schedules for the building code is sixty-five percent. That's where it comes from.
Yeah.
We are twenty-five only because of, like I said, that, trying to reduce some of those in, in volume process.
Yeah, it was just the, the volume of houses we were doing was, we were accumulating money. And so that was to help adjust that.
I don't know how we couldn't have. I mean, I'll be honest with you. When you build five hundred homes a year, it just.
And that's.
I don't know what fee you could charge it.
Yes, yep.
And you don't know that, how many homes you're going to build every year until you're done.
But now we're, I mean, we're looking out.
Last year, we lost money. Twenty twenty-three, we lost money on building permits, just so everyone's aware.
Well, then.
I mean, change it.
So, so then I think we need, why wait three months to change it? Do it now. As long as you're working on this whole thing.
It's up to you guys. Like I said, I'm not the council. I don't make the decision. I just provide the information.
I think whether we change it now or change it later, we still need to be mindful of the result. And then if something has to change afterwards, we change it. I'm okay changing it now and then if ever since things don't go as planned, we change it back. But I'm okay with it.
Yeah, I, I guess I just, so we just change it now.
Got two votes for changing it now.
I'm okay with that.
Changing it now?
Yeah, just do it.
Change it back to sixty-five percent?
Yeah.
Okay. Any other comments, changes, requests from the fee schedule? Quite a few changes here. If there's any more changes that come with the fee schedule, we will most certainly bring them back to council. Do want to let you guys know an update on the litigation. We have a hearing next week, so I will provide an update after that from the court.
Okay, I need a motion in a second. Motion to approve the fee schedule as discussed.
And, yep, and amended, yep.
Second.
Any more discussion? All those papers say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Motion carries five zero. And there are no objections. We are adjourned. Immersion?